Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The October 17, 2022 Legislative Session of the Anorundal County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. And we will pause for the invocation and the pledge, which I will lead this evening. As we take on this very last meeting of this particular council, it is, first off, unbelievable that it has flown by these four years. I went by in a blink and very slowly at the same time, at times. I just want to wish us one last evening of service to our community and putting the best interests of all of the people and all of the needs of Anorundal County at the front of our mind as we make our votes this evening. So, thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
There was nothing submitted online ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone sign up ahead of time to speak, but if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table, have a seat, and when it is your turn, you may state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? All right. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of October 3, 2022.
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have two sets to read in as well. The first one is the county council along with Nalash Kaliana-Raman, MD FA CP Health Officer, sat as the Board of Health beginning at 6:00 PM. The meeting was held in the county council chambers located in the Arundel Center in Annapolis, Maryland. Next up are the minutes of the legislative session. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Radvian at 7:04 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers located in the Arundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes for October 3, 2022?
So moved. Councilwoman Pickard.
Hare, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of October 3, 2022, both sets, stand approved as read. Next, we would ordinarily introduce bills or resolutions, but we have none to introduce this evening, so we will go on to our legislative agenda. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 85-22.
Bill Number 85-22, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service, Position Control, Department of Aging and Disabilities, and Police Department.
Thank you. This is an administration bill, and I see the team coming on down to the table. When you are ready, you may have the floor, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the county council. It's good to be with you this evening. With me for 85-22 is our Personnel Officer, Ms. Bedowski. We also have joining us, I believe it's your first meeting, Sarah Heffernan, Major Passman from the police, and Carissa Kelly from Aging and Disabilities, as well as Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. So they're here for all the tough questions on this bill. 85-22 reclassifies positions within the Department of Aging and Disabilities and our Police Department. Within Aging and Disabilities, we reclassify a vacant human services aide position to a program specialist one. The newly reclassified position will be in charge of supervising the department's respite care referral program. Within the Police Department, the bill reclassifies a vacant police officer position into a police captain position. The new position will be tasked with overseeing the Office of Professional Standards. Hope you'll pass the bill tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing no red lights, I assume we're ready to move on. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 85-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
There were no submissions submitted through the online testimony tool, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone sign up to testify this evening, but if there is anyone who wishes to do so, you may come down to the table, have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 85-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 85-22.
Bill Number 85-22, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service, Position Control, Department of Aging and Disabilities, and Police Department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 85-22.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 85-22 has been passed.
Thank you, and thank you to the members of the panel who showed up specifically for this bill. We always appreciate your attendance, even when we don't have questions. All right, moving on. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 86-22.
Bill Number 86-22, An Ordnance Concerning Purchasing Acquisition of Real Property by Gift.
Thank you. This is another administration bill. On behalf of the administration, Mr. Barron, you have the floor whenever you are ready.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is Eric Michelson and Tom Burke from DPW and Christine Nederer from Office of Law. 86-22 is accepting a gift of real property to the county. The county would acquire by gift 12.1 acres of property in Laurel. The owners of the property reached out to the county to express interest in donating the land, and the county's Department of Public Works Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration Program desires to acquire the property for use for a future stream restoration project. The administration desires to accept the property per Section 8-3-101B of the Code, which deals with acceptance of real property. The county conducted an appraisal of the property on July 5, 2022. The assessed value is $97,000. A Phase 1 environmental site assessment was completed on August 25, 2022, which identified no significant environmental hazards on the property. The environmental site assessment did identify certain solid waste dumping on the property. The Department of Public Works would be responsible for removing the solid waste and estimates a cost of $5,000 to do so. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and we ask that you pass the bill tonight.
Thank you. Seeing no lights from my colleagues. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 86-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, there were no submissions ahead of time.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone sign up ahead of time, but if there is anyone here who wishes to testify, you may come up at this time, have a seat at the table, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Once again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 86-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 86-22.
Bill Number 86-22, An Ordnance Concerning Purchasing Acquisition of Real Property by Gift.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 86-22.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 86-22 has been passed.
Thank you, and once again, thank you to the panel for your attendance this evening. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 87-22.
Bill Number 87-22, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works and Zoning, Small Cell Systems and Commercial Telecommunication Facilities on Scenic or Historic Roads.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think all of you have had an opportunity to review the bill, and if you have questions, please let me know, but I think the bill is pretty straightforward. It takes an approach similar to one that I used a few, I think it was two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, relating to schools, with these small cell systems being located on schools. And the same idea existed there, which was that if there is a desire to place one of these systems on a school, which now we're using scenic and historic roads south of 214, the developer would need to submit the certified technical analysis to say that there was a need for this to be done in this particular location. Ultimately, I would expect that it's either going to be DPW, planning and zoning, maybe even inspections and permits at some point, but you all will be the ones who have to review and determine whether or not that technical analysis is sufficient or not. Given that the administration has generally been supportive of small cell efforts based on the legislation we've seen the last few years, I would expect that the administration will look at this with an eye toward making sure that these things are moving forward. So with that, again, if there are questions, happy to answer them, but that is the general sense of this bill. It is another step that just needs to be done if we are going to put these systems, telecommunications systems or small cells, on scenic and historic roads. And the idea is, I think most of you know, south of 214 is generally considered the sort of demarcation line between South County and North County, and really, the more developed portions of the county versus some of the less developed portions that are more agricultural and rural still. And so that was the purpose in using that as the demarcation line. That's something that's present, as you know, in the general development plan, that area. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, would the administration like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quickly to introduce the folks at the table, we have Mr. Bakie and Ms. Miller from DPW and OPZ respectively, and Lori Blair-Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Want to appreciate the sponsors' conversations that he has had with the administration during the creation of this bill. The administration certainly shares the goal of the sponsor to identify solutions that protect our rural vistas. Similar to the council, the county exec has also received communications from representatives from the telecommunications industry expressing current concerns about the impacts that the bill could have on upgrading and providing wireless service within parts of the county. Industry representatives also raised potential concerns surrounding the bill's compliance with federal rules and FCC regulations. The administration is absolutely committed to working with the sponsor, interested community partners, the industry, and other folks in the county, in our county agencies, and other interested parties to discuss a path forward. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't think this iteration of the bill fully addresses some of the preemption concerns with the federal level raised by the industry. So we're happy to answer any questions, but at this time, we cannot support the bill in its current form. If we had a meeting or two, I think we probably would be able to sort it out and look forward to working with the sponsor in the future to come to an agreeable solution that works for all.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the sponsor if there was a consideration when drafting the bill of scaling it down to scenic and historic rural roads, because when you look at the map that shows scenic and historic roads, it's every road. It's every road south of 214. And, you know, while South County is certainly less developed, they still have people, residents and others traversing these roads and get into accidents on these roads, and still need to be able to pick up their phone and have service. Was there any thought to that? I mean, obviously, it's too late to amend a bill, but...
Yeah, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work that you did to share with the council sort of the overlays of what it would look like if it were the rural versus all of the scenic and historic roads. That was not a consideration in the drafting of the bill, but, you know, depending on the vote this evening, that can go one of two ways. That could either be some sort of an amendment at the next council, or it could certainly, if this does not pass, that could be what the next iteration of this bill looks like. So I appreciate you raising that.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I'm not sure if this question would be for Planning and Zoning or for DPW, but on the concept of a no reasonable alternative location, there's a lot of flexibility there. Is that there's no other available property anywhere south of 214? Is it there's no other available property for sale south of 214? Is it there's no property without wetlands? How would we envision on a practical matter that moving forward? Because I'm not opposed in concept to something that makes sure we're trying to preserve the vista on scenic and historic roads, but I do struggle a little bit trying to figure out as a practical matter how this would get implemented and what kind of impact that has on making sure there is communication access where it needs to be.
Alex Bakie with the Department of Public Works. Madam Chair, members of the county council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to answer questions. My comments, I'll limit to the department's jurisdiction within roads rights of way. In that case, we currently have a set of aesthetic and technical standards and requirements that we would hold small cell developers to. One of the things that we currently stipulate, particularly if you're trying to do a new placement, not co-locating on existing structure, but create a new pole or structure, is a technical analysis that shows that it's technically required, that there's a propagation map or something other that shows that there's, say, a dead zone, that they can't provide service there. So that's the kind of, sort of, we're looking for as much of a quantitative analysis that shows that there is a reasonable cause to say we really need this facility here. So that's our approach within DPW and the roads rights of way. So I'll leave my comment there.
And, I'm sorry, can I just follow up?
Certainly.
And that exists now even before this bill?
So that exists now. It does not apply to scenic or historic roadways.
Okay.
So that is not a requirement currently in our standards.
Okay. It's for any right-of-way?
It's for any right-of-way where they are trying to place a new pole.
Right.
If they are simply co-locating on something that exists, then we're not currently requiring that bar to be crossed.
Okay. Thank you.
All the lights went on. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be quick. Mr. Bakie, thank you for that. Just to understand, so the standard that's in this bill where it talks about this technical analysis and the no reasonable alternatives, it sounds to me, from what you said, like that's something that DPW is already considering for these new placements. Is that fair, or am I going too far with that?
Councilman Volkey, I would say that of the applications that we've had so far, they've all been on existing poles, in most cases, existing BG wood utility poles. We really have not approved any new structures at all, so I really haven't had to apply that standard.
Have you, just a quick follow-up on that. Have you thought through, has DPW thought through what that standard would look like, kind of how you indicated you'd want to see a map and see if there's a dead zone and to see the data to support it?
We have it in written form.
Okay.
We just haven't had to apply the standard yet.
Understood.
In practice.
Yep.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This might be for Ms. Klausmeyer. I don't know her implementation, Mr. Bakie. In regards to an application that would be put in before this bill's passed, and then also an application, you know, that we change the status of a road, how would that work?
Councilman Pruski, thank you. I would say that the difference as it stands now is we simply wouldn't consider whether it was a scenic historic road at all, and we simply would approve the application without that consideration. Most likely, it would be approved if it was a co-location on an existing facility. If the bill passed, then there would be this additional standard, and I have to say, to date, I have not had any applications for the area of the county south of 214. But should they come in, we will now identify and create some processes to say, okay, this application is within this zone, we now need to apply this standard, and ask for some additional justification and just cause for why we should allow the application to be approved.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Ms. Miller, maybe you could address when it's not in a right-of-way and instead is, you know, private property or something of that nature.
Sure, Lynn Miller. It's a similar process. If a permanently located facility is going to be on a private parcel, it would come through, the permit would come through inspections and permits, and then the site plan would come up to planning and zoning for review. I do think that OIT also has a role in the review process and the technical and aesthetic standards that Alex mentioned. Both for a small cell system and a commercial telecommunication facility, there's probably a dozen or so either conditional or special exception requirements that apply, and a number of them are fairly technical, and so they require either a licensed engineer or a certified consultant to review them. So while it comes to our office, we are usually looking for that certification from an outside party to make the declaration that those requirements in the code are met.
Okay. Let me ask one follow-up.
Go ahead.
Do you currently use a no reasonable alternative standard, or is it more just a justified need of some sort?
You know, without having that sort of defined somewhere in the code, I'm not exactly sure what we would use to determine whether something was no reasonable alternative. And again, I think we would probably look to the certification by either the licensed engineer or outside consultant.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was my concern. Thank you so much.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I just want to touch on the concern over the FCC violation. If I remember correctly from our original 5G bill that we implemented, where we have to be mindful is that we cannot prohibit installation of small cells or 5Gs. We can direct. So what would the concern beyond just directing this additional layer? I mean, it's not prohibiting, so I'm just trying to identify what the FCC concern would be.
Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. So the major concern, so you're right, we can't ban them altogether, and then the major concern with the FCC is that you can't prevent the service from happening. So I think the issue is, I think some I mentioned, dead spots. You know, if someone is trying to fill a dead spot, you can't just deny the location of one of these based on, you know, because then that would be denying the service in that area. I think that's the biggest FCC concern. And it has to be based on general planning and zoning type of considerations and placing conditions upon their placement.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So if someone who was applying for one of these came and said, without this specific location on this scenic road, there is a dead spot, and there's nowhere else that we can avoid it other than this location, wouldn't that be grounds to get the certificate and approval?
That may be the definition of no reasonable alternative, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Klausmeyer, are you familiar with the letter we received from the Maryland 5G Partnership?
I have not seen that, no.
Okay. They go through with several legal claims that raise some questions for me, mostly because I'm not entirely sure if they're true, so I wanted to ask you. One of the things, the first, most important thing they say is that the bill is flawed because a county, which would be, you know, part of a local requirement, a local requirement that would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of service, is unlawful and preempted according to this FCC small cell order. Do you agree that that's accurate?
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Okay. Okay. And that then, they go on to say that there's one small possible exception based on the Ninth Circuit opinion, which I did not look up, and it's not cited here, but assuming that they cited it correctly, the only reason that there could be an exception would be for some aesthetic requirement or reasonable aesthetic purposes. And that they don't define what reasonable aesthetic purposes are, they just say they have to be reasonable, and that if it was the sole reason, such as the fact that a road is deemed scenic or historic, at least, I think as I take it from this letter, it's Maryland 5G's position, that that would not be enough for the county. This legislation that creates a scenic and historic road or designation and says you cannot put a small cell here for aesthetic purposes, even if it said aesthetic purposes, like in the bill, that that's preempted fully.
I'd have to look at the, see exactly what the case said, but you can apply the general principles of planning and zoning. Aesthetic is, aesthetics of the neighborhood is one of those. Maybe what they're saying is that you couldn't just have a blanket denial, that you would have to consider each one individually.
And I think that might make sense. Our scenic and historic roads criteria include aesthetics, but only as one, and you have to meet more than one in either type of category to be able to have the road designated. So the issue, I think, then boils down to, they then go on to say that the FCC already requires the small cell providers to comply with the National Historic Preservation Act, and that prior to constructing any wireless facilities, they would have to check in with both federal and state historic resources agencies. But we're talking about local roads. Do you have an opinion whether those, the aesthetic considerations that we would have that might be just local, let's say we have just a historic home, it's on the local register, and it's located on a scenic and historic road, but it's not on the state register, then can we still protect that area?
That's a good question. I would say if we did it in the name of zoning, or, you know, planning and zoning, we might be able to, but I can't guarantee that that would pass muster if there's some determination that the law and the regulations related to that national historic, that's preemptive, and that's all they have to do. And I'd have to go back and look at that and do some research on whether that is considered to be a preemptive type of provision. Because there's a lot of preemption in this area. I mean, we have very narrow, very narrow things that we can do, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Klausmeyer. We have outside counsel who we consult with on these telecommunications issues, right? I think the firm is best, best in Krieger's. Is that it? Okay.
My understanding, yes.
I had worked with another attorney in the Office of Law, not you, so, on Bill 5320, which I had put in two years ago, which is the one I keep referring to about the schools. My understanding was that had been reviewed both by the Office of Law and by outside counsel, and both had found that it was a way to not violate the FCC, that we were in fact within our rights to do it from a legal standpoint. Given that this is similar, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm not clear on, is Office of Law saying that that advice has changed? Was that advice bad the first time it was given? Is it now different this time? That's what I'm trying to understand, because my recollection had been that we were on good legal footing the last time.
I...
Was that enough of a question?
Yeah. We did look at this bill, obviously. I mean, we looked at a prior iteration of this bill. I think this bill, you know, it's hard to predict what the FCC is, like I say, we're walking a very, you know, narrow path here as far as what we can and cannot do. I think this is probably, it's probably as close as you're going to get to language that would pass muster with the FCC, but it's, we can't, I have a hard time predicting what they would do.
Walk in the tightrope. I got it.
Yeah.
I got it. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Pickard, District Two. I understand the, the bill previously about schools, but school properties are, there's a lot in between a school property. This map shows, south of two fourteen, ninety-five percent or more of the roads are all scenic and historic. So that, to me, makes this, whether it's legal or not, it just seems like we're asking the developer of a, a system to go through a hoop that they're going to automatically pass because they have to. Like, there's no other place to put it, because the road next door is scenic and historic, and the road, if it had just been rural, scenic and historic rural, there's some wiggle room with dead zones and things. It just seems like it's a, it's just an extra step that possibly we actually already do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it sounds like we do already do something very similar to this, whether it's required by the code or not. I, I understand what you're saying. It's not a blanket prohibition, but it's a, it's a hurdle, I think, is what it does. And I think, because it's not saying that you can never put one on a scenic or historic road, it's just, it's another hoop you have to jump through to put it on a scenic or historic road. And yes, it's true that if you move it from point A to point B, you might still have that issue, but then you just have to jump through the hurdle there. So, so that's the question, is the FCC going to see this as something that is, you know, prohibiting service in the, in an area, or not allowing a, a service provider to complete their system? And it doesn't do that completely, it just makes them say, this is the spot and this isn't the spot. I mean, that's, that's the way I read it.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Thank you. I, I think this is a, a very important and obviously complicated discussion, and I think this is sort of when the administration looked at this bill, we support the intent and want to work with the sponsor. I think we've just heard a number of questions about, I think your words, Councilman Volkey, we're on a tight rope. I, I think if we had a couple extra meetings to work this through, we could probably get some of these questions answered, get some sign-off from outside counsel and get there. I think this is just a bill that needs a little bit more work, and, and that's where the administration came down. But appreciate the discussion and definitely appreciate the, the sponsor's intent, and however this bill shakes out, I think we will have more work to do on the issue.
I'd like to ask one final question. Do we have any examples of where the FCC has taken action against a, a local entity, a local government, because they felt that that local government overstepped its sort of regulatory authority? And if so, what type of action did they take?
I, I'm sure I can find those examples. You know, the, there was, there are large coalitions of local and state governments that have been in litigation with the FCC over their regulations of various aspects of this type, technology. So we can certainly get more information on that, but it, I have not been involved with it personally most recently, but what I saw early on was the FCC was generally getting its way on, you know, the applications and processing applications and that sort of thing. So, but I can certainly get more information on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, Ms. Pickard.
If the conversation is winding up, I just, I would personally feel better if we were looking at, in fact, it was from my original, my first look at the bill, I thought we were talking about rural, so rural historic road, scenic and historic road. So I, I would feel more comfortable if that's where the bill had landed. We just have, we just have a, a real need for communications, especially in medical emergencies and, and road hazards and things. We've seen it through tornadoes and car accidents and emergency management response. It just, it makes me a little nervous to do the full, all the scenic and historic roads. So I'm, I'm a no this evening on this.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to go back just to the Maryland Five G Partnership letter for one, one other point, I think is, they're claiming that that FCC small cell order does not recognize a state or local jurisdiction's requirement that a carrier show a need for coverage in a particular area. And as I read our bill, that's exactly what would be required by the technical analysis. It would have to show that there is a need for the coverage in that area. Is that right?
I'm sorry, you, I, but I think what you said was, it's not governed by the local government or state government's statement of need. Is that what it, what the letter says?
The letter says that the FCC's order does not recognize a state or local jurisdiction's requirement that a carrier show a need for coverage in a particular area. And I think the bill, I was looking at page.
Yeah. But it doesn't say that it prohibits. I, I, in other words, it doesn't, I don't know what the FCC's position is. I'd have to go back and take a closer look at what the, if the FCC has commented on that, and whether that is in violation of their requirement that you can't interfere with the ability of a system to build out, so to speak.
Right. I don't think I have any more questions for anybody. I just think this is a very difficult bill to, to decide. It's sort of like, we don't have enough context, in I, in my view, to be able to make a decision. It might be easier if there were some specific sites that we were concerned about, that we could identify and talk about how they differ from each other. But right now, the main thing I see is, you know, somebody, probably a cell provider, took a case within the Ninth Circuit, up to the Ninth Circuit, to invalidate some sort of state or local regulation, and all they came back with was a small caveat that aesthetic requirements might be enough. I think that's just too many, too many mites, too many hypotheticals for me with this bill.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I don't know that you will be able to easily answer this question, since you, it sounds like you have not done this yet, but what is the anticipated additional time added if a certificate process has to be followed?
Alex Bakie, Department of Public Works, Councilwoman Fiedler. My best estimate is that since most of the, the, the analysis work needs to be done by the developer applicant, and we just have the review period, it's, it's likely not an onerous process, but it's staff time. And it's really hard for me to estimate at this time, not having gone through the process. In addition, we're utilizing a consultant for their tele, telecommunications expertise to augment our own permit review staff to do some of the review process. So we would likely utilize that consultant as well, and that's billable time. I just, it, it's really hard to estimate, but it would likely be a couple of hours, again, just to review and validate what was prepared by the, the engineer or expert on the applicant's side.
Thank you.
Certainly.
All right. Seeing no additional lights at this time from my colleagues, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number eighty-seven dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, there was one submission received ahead of time that was made through that online testimony tool. The letter from the Maryland Five G Partnership that was sent to the whole council has since been shared with me as well, and that has also been added to the record.
Thank you. We did not have anyone sign up ahead of time, but if there is anyone, to testify alive in person, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table at this time and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. All right. Seeing no takers, the public hearing on Bill number eighty-seven dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-seven dash twenty-two.
Bill number eighty-seven twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works and Zoning Small Cell Systems and Commercial Telecommunication Facilities on Scenic or Historic Roads.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number eighty-seven dash twenty-two.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay, with the caveat that I, I think I feel similarly as the administration, that I'm interested in the topic and would be happy to continue this conversation.
That's one and the affirmative, six and the negative. Bill number eighty-seven twenty-two has been defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty-two.
Bill number eighty-eight twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, BRAC Mixed-Use Development Applicability.
Thank you. I had that emphasis backwards. It should have been eighty-eight twenty-two, because these are all twenty-two. Mr. Pruski and Ms. Lacy, this is your bill, whichever of you would like to speak, and I see Mr. Pruski's light, you may have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. If you can recall, this council passed with a seven oh vote, the BRAC's, BRAC Mixed-Use Development Update. As we're reviewing and discussing applications, we found that there were many folks confused about when the grandfathering date applied. As many of the council members know, we have been very supportive of grandfathering, and this is just a slight change. I'm sure the Office of Planning and Zoning or others could add additional pieces, but again, I consider this a minor technical update to allow folks to use the BRAC provisions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Barron, on behalf of the administration, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Sticking with me is Ms. Miller and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. Yeah, I think the administration would concur with Councilman Pruski's description. This is a minor change to retain the intent of thirty-one twenty-two. We are comfortable with this bill.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on eighty-eight dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone sign up to speak ahead of time, but if there is anyone who wishes to do so, you may come up at this time, have a seat at the table, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty-two.
Bill number eighty-eight twenty-two, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, BRAC Mixed-Use Development Applicability.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty-two.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number eighty-eight twenty-two has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number thirty-nine dash twenty-two.
Resolution Number thirty-nine twenty-two, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a Grant Under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, Federal FY twenty-two Local Solicitation, and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, this is another administration bill. You have the floor. Or resolution, my, my apologies.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So we have done a similar resolution for this for the last three years. Just to remind, the council, thirty-nine twenty-two approves the application for the Edward Byrne Assistance Grant Program administered by the U.S. Department of Justice. This year, our grants total one hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars, and there is no county match. In the description, you'll see what the money will be allocated for, but this will continue many of the good programs that we have put this grant money to work for in previous years, and ask that you continue it.
Thank you. Seeing no lights from my colleagues at this time, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number thirty-nine dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone signed up, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come down to the table, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Once again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number thirty-nine dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number thirty-nine dash twenty-two.
Resolution Number thirty-nine twenty-two, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a Grant under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, Federal FY twenty-two Local Solicitation, and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number thirty-nine dash twenty-two.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number thirty-nine twenty-two has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number forty-five dash twenty-two.
Resolution Number forty-five twenty-two, Resolution Approving the Determination of Certain Improved County-Owned Property Being Part of the Dorsey Run Road Right-of-Way in Annapolis Junction, Maryland as Surplus Property.
Thank you. This is another administration resolution. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have Ms. Anderson from Central Services, and Christine Niederer is joining us from the Office of Law. Forty-five twenty-two approves the determination of a two-point-nine, two-four-five acre portion of count, of the county-owned right-of-way known as Dorsey Run Road in Annapolis Junction as surplus property. Real estate has contacted the agencies, all county agencies, and determined no need for the property, and recommended the county proceed with the surplus process. Staff are happy to answer any questions, but as council will recall, surplusing property is a several-step process.
All right. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number forty-five dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we don't have anyone signed up to speak on this resolution, but if there is anyone here who would like to speak on this resolution, you may come down to the table and have a seat, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number forty-five dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number forty-five dash twenty-two.
Resolution Number forty-five twenty-two, Resolution Approving the Determination of Certain Improved County-Owned Property Being Part of the Dorsey Run Road Right-of-Way in Annapolis Junction, Maryland as Surplus Property.
Thank you. And seeing no lights indicating further discussion is desired, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number forty-five dash twenty-two.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number forty-five twenty-two has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number forty-six dash twenty-two.
Resolution Number forty-six twenty-two, Resolution Approving the Application of Stephen D. Hopkins and Mark D. Hopkins to Sell an Agricultural Land Preservation Easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on one hundred and thirty-nine point eight, thirty acres in Lothian, Maryland.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, another administration resolution, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have Ms. Palito and Ms. Miller from Wreckin' Parks and OPC, respectively, and Christine Niederer is sticking us, sticking with us for, from the Office of Law. We've done a couple of these types of resolutions in the past. This is a state program. What forty-six, Resolution forty-six twenty-two formally does is recommend the approval of an application to sell an agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. State law provides foreign avenue for property owners to sell agricultural land preservation easements on their property to the foundation, subject to a recommendation of approval or disapproval from the local county government. This particular grant, or easement, would add about one hundred and thirty-nine acres along Mount Zion Marlboro Road in Lothian. That one hundred and thirty-nine acres would add. Road in Lothian. That one hundred and thirty-nine acres would add, if approved, would add in addition to an additional one thousand acres of land within a one-mile radius of the farm that are already protected from development under preservation easements. Staff here can answer any specific questions. Council should have all the backup documentation in your pack. We ask that you pass this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Seeing no lights from the floor or from the council, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution number forty-six twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone signed up to speak ahead of time, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, once again, the public hearing on Resolution number forty-six dash twenty-two is now closed. I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number forty-six dash twenty-two.
Resolution number forty-six twenty-two, resolution approving the application of Stephen D. Hopkins and Mark D. Hopkins to sell an agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on one hundred and thirty-nine point eight three zero acres in Lothian, Maryland.
Thank you. I actually just have one question. It's more out of curiosity than anything. Once this easement is in place, I assume since it's an agricultural easement, it will be continued to be used as agricultural land. Who are the farmers?
If you want to add anything, it's the Hopkins family. Stephen D. Hopkins and Mark D. Hopkins own this particular farm. The Hopkins family operates approximately twenty-six hundred acres of farmland within the county, and Mr. Hopkins, one of the Mr. Hopkins, serves on the county soil and conservation board.
Okay, I should follow up my question with a little slightly different one. Since it's an easement that will, you know, extend over time, who, you know, after, you know, their lives are over, who continues that agricultural work, or how is that, is it passed down to the family, or is it, I'm just curious how that, you know, how it's determined sort of like down the road?
I'm going to turn it over to the expert.
Thank you.
Department of Recreation and Parks. The easements run with the land, which means they're recorded in the land record, so whoever owns that property is required to keep it in agricultural slash woodland use. It doesn't have to be a family member, but I can tell you that it will be because both of Mr. Hopkins' sons are farmers, so.
Thank you very much.
Chances are, it will be.
All right, but if it were ever to go outside of the Hopkins family, whoever purchased the land would still have to use it for agricultural purposes?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, let's see. Oh, Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about the fiscal piece of this. So, it indicates in the fiscal note that there is no impact. Who's paying for the easement? Is that state money coming down to purchase the easement? Is that how that's going to work, and then we're just sort of a holder for it?
Our general allotted funds from the state is close to one point four million dollars, so the majority of the money will be state funds. Actually, maybe all in the end.
What I thought, thank you.
All right, seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two. I'm sorry, I flipped the page to, no, I'm reading at the wrong part of the page, forty-six dash twenty-two.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number forty-six twenty-two has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two.
Resolution forty-seven twenty-two, resolution supporting the Anorundal County Board of Education's fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program request for submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, you have the floor. This is once again an administration resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have with me Mr. Stansky and Mr. Ruff from our Board of Education, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Forty-seven twenty-two confirms the support of the FY twenty-four Capital Improvement Program request submitted by the Anorundal County Board of Education to the Interagency Commission on School Construction for funding under the state's Public School Construction Program. Procedures set forth by the IAC require a letter of support from the local government, which requires council action. Mr. Stansky and Mr. Ruff are happy to answer any specific questions with this. To remind the council, this is a action we take every year. There is a letter every year, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no lights from my colleagues, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone signed up ahead of time, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table at this time, have a seat, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And one last time, the public hearing on Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two.
Resolution number forty-seven twenty-two, resolution supporting the Anorundal County Board of Education's fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Public School Construction Capital Improvement request for submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction.
Thank you, and seeing no further lights, I think everyone's ready to vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number forty-seven twenty-two has been adopted.
Thank you, and thank you again to our panelists for being here this evening. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Pusky, you may have the floor.
I have some personal comments that I will make, but first, I have a presentation, actually. This past year, as you know, Councilwoman Radvian has served us as chair, and I want to read this, and of course, I hope that everyone in the audience, the thousands that are here, can recognize the work that she's put in. In recognition of Lisa Radvian for serving as chair, the Anorundal County Council from December third, twenty eighteen, December fifth, twenty twenty-two, we thank you for your service. I want to present this to you.
Thank you. Very cool. It's really been my honor and privilege to serve the whole council and be your chair, and thank you to my vice chair and everyone else that stepped in to help at various times. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an auspicious occasion for all seven of us, actually. This is our final council meeting of this term of service. This council together has endured and I think successfully led this county over the last four years. We've accomplished a great many things together. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge our eight-year veteran who has served his last term on the county council, and as a point of personal privilege, has been my seven fifteen a.m. phone call nearly daily for the last four years. He brought us into this council as chair, showed us how to get it done, and you have served your district and this county admirally for the last eight years. So, thank you for your service, Mr. Pusky.
Thank you. All right, if you don't mind, last speech before we go. First of all, I want to let everybody take a look at something. This is the chair when I entered my office. This is the chair that I'm leading with. We are frugal in District Four, just like we were with the county budget, so I hope the Anorundal Historical Society will put this in their museum and continue use of service of this, because again, we believe in friskal responsibility, and it's your money, so. But I do want to take a few moments. All good things obviously must come to an end, and obviously, it's been an honor and privilege to serve not only the council, but with my colleagues. And I want to begin by going through a few groups of people that many people do not get recognition, and I think this is so important because often when we serve, you don't understand the processes, the institution of government. And for those of you that don't know, each of us have a legislative aide, and for each one of them, they serve us on a daily basis. There are eyes, ears, and mouth when we're not here, and they also deal with a lot of constituent issues, sometimes good and bad. And I personally want to thank Dave Halmecky, who originally served with me, and Brian Kemet, and all the aides who have been supportive, because even if your aide's not here, they help out with council meetings, they come and support. They deserve a round of applause. I think if you join me in that, I'd appreciate that. Also, Ms. Corby, Mr. Bennett, and Ms. Bowler. Obviously, Mr. Bennett, I can't give you too much credit yet because you haven't been here long, but obviously, I think you're going to do a great job, and we appreciate you. I think you're going to be a great asset as we move forward, and I appreciate the advice you give me for the short time. But Ms. Corby and Ms. Bowler, they keep this machine running. For those of you that don't know, the public testimony that comes in, the blue letter, the audits, the daily phone calls, weekends, they do a superb job. They do not get a lot of credit and recognition. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for serving this county. You probably should be paid a lot more, and hopefully, the next council looks at that. But your team, your staff, thank you so much, and again, a round of applause for you all for everything. A few other thank yous. I'm sorry, this is my last meeting. Mr. Barron is still here. You've done a great job representing County Executive Pittman and the administration. I know there's been times when we don't see eye to eye, but that's government. We all have to work together, but you've done a great job for this council, communicating with people, keeping in touch. I think you made the county executive proud and also have got a lot done, so thank you again for your service. To the department heads, I know there's not a lot here. Mr. Trumbauer from Budget, I know I serve with you, obviously, as a council member. Mr. Phipps, Ms. Lays, Ms. Rhodes, Mr. Powers, I can go through all of them, and even the law office, obviously, Ms. Klausmeyer, Mr. Swain. Again, your responsiveness, making things happen. These council meetings, in terms of legal opinion, sitting here late at night, when you have to wait for the last piece of legislation to get passed, we appreciate you, and again, you deserve a round of applause. Thank you again, appreciate it. I only got an hour left, so just hang with me. Again, I want to personally thank my family. A lot of people don't understand this. When you serve in public office, you not only put yourself out there, but you take a lot of time. In my eight years of service, I've missed graduations, baseball games, first hits, swim meets, all of it. It's because of the choice that I made and sacrifice, but if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here, and I appreciate that, and I think all the families that serve up here really deserve a lot of credit, because especially today, in the climate that we're in, and you put yourself out there, family is very important, not only to me, but the community, but thank them for obviously doing that. And these past eight years have been great for me. Just a couple of highlights. I was the one who pushed for the charter amendment to require town hall meetings. I know, I still talk to former county executive Laura Newman to this day. I held her to it and making sure that obviously we had a charter amendment passed. That is so important, to have public meetings in the community before the budget's passed. This council's the fiscal authority, and having those meetings, especially with the county executive, for each one, has made a huge difference. I really do applaud him, and I hope that continues regardless of what happens. Also, the public nuisance law, it took me a while, but I want to thank the members of this council. Believe it or not, in the area where we passed that law, crime is down. It's made a huge difference, and I will say, I want to thank my other colleagues that recently passed other nuisance bills, and whether it's a Democrat or Republican, doesn't matter. It's about solving problems in our community, and that makes a huge difference, and I appreciate that. I want to thank, obviously, the voters and others for the Human Relations Commission. I know there was a lot of questions about putting something in the charter, but let me tell you, it's important to many people in our community that they get heard, and I think that's something that is instilled, will continue to be in the charter, and makes a big difference. This council also took a big step with the forest conservation bill. There was a lot of back and forth, but if you look at it, it's one of the strongest in the state, and all of us came together to pass that. Again, bipartisan, a lot of differences, but discussions, but we made it happen. The tripway bond rating that we currently have, I'm not aware of a lot of different counties that have that. It took a lot of hard work, but this council has been fiscally responsible through budgets, and I certainly appreciate that. I think the most important people, though, in this room are police officers, our staff, the folks that stay late. I can tell you, the planners, inspectors, the fire department, Department of Aging, transportation staff, the nine-one-one dispatchers, all the people that we see on a daily basis, they're the ones that make this county operate. And I will say to my colleagues, if you're coming back or you don't come back, please make sure you take care of them, because they're what matters, and they make everything happen in this county government to run officially. To my colleagues, I certainly will miss you. It's been an honor. I've learned from everyone on this council, and I appreciate it. I will say, and I've said this to a few people, when I first got on, I was nervous as hell, having people who did not serve, but I'll tell you, the life experiences of everyone up here have been amazing, from engineer, lawyer, we won't talk about the lawyer bit, but even teacher, education, school board, again, this council has been amazing to serve this county, and I think that they've served us well, and I appreciate each one of your friend trips. It's been great. I will finish with this. Benjamin Franklin said, "A word to the wise enough, many words won't fill a bushel." You know, I'm very brief, and obviously, I have these closing remarks. After November eighth, though, there may or may not be different people sitting in our seats, but remember, when you're placed here, take the time to mentor and communicate with people. Pick up the phone even if you disagree with somebody. It makes a big difference. We represent citizens and progress, and we must continue. While it's important to listen to the loudest voice in the room, it's always important to listen to the ones that aren't here, and sometimes that loudest voice is not the voice of reason and goodwill, and remember that. Thank you to the residents of District Four. Thank you to the county. It's been an honor and privilege. I appreciate it. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I wanted to point out, Mr. Pusky, I have been waiting all night for you to say one last time, "I'm not a lawyer, I just play one on TV." You've been saying it for eight years, and so I've had to say it for you. Second, I wanted to say grateful thank you to my boss, Ms. Linda Harris, who's, without whose experience, I don't think I could have ever possibly done this job that I am definitely leaving as of now-ish. So, but she also reminded me that today is National Bosses Day, so I wanted to thank Kaylee Schultz, because she has been a boss for this county council and keeping us to make sure we toe the line and do what we're supposed to do. Thank you. And it's been a pleasure working with you all.
Thank you. I'm not going to say a lot of things. I'm hoping I'll be back here in December, but none of us know what the future holds, but I really just wanted to say, I've really enjoyed working with each and every one of the members of this council and of the staff, and the department folks that come and talk to us. This is just an amazing place to work, and I want to thank you for being part of that for the last four years and having me be a part of that, so I'm so grateful for this. And, you know, obviously, knocking on wood for four more, but we'll talk about that after we adjourn the meeting. Any additional business before we adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until December fifth, twenty twenty-two. We will see you then.